Good morning. This, the February 7th, 2018 meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners will please come to order. Before we start, I'd like to recognize in the audience Mr. Jim Connors, who is a Commissioner from the Town of Southern Shores, who's visiting as an observer today. Thank you, Jim.
Good to see you.
Today, we mourn the loss of Mrs. Josephine Fessler, a longtime and beloved member of the Nags Head Fire Department Auxiliary and the Nags Head Fire Relief Fund Board, who passed away last weekend at her home in Nags Head. Her involvement in the Nags Head Fire Department was formative and substantial, helping to create the future of the organization and shape the community as we know it today. Mrs. Fessler was a wonderful and loving public servant, who was an appointed trustee on the Fire Relief Fund. She was perpetually committed to the fire department and personnel. She was forever supportive of relief efforts for fire staff, encouraged funding for educational opportunities, and an effort to raise department service levels and provide for community risk reduction through public safety. Joe, as she was known to her friends, was a great person and a mentor, always willing to pitch in for community fundraising, educational events, and fire response support. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. And now, if you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor and Board, if I could, please, I'd like to ask or request that the Board remove item H.3, which is a discussion of the amending of the ordinance of the trash cart, trash cart rollback section of that ordinance, and to give staff more time to come back with, maybe in March, with some other components of the sanitation and recycling program, and we can consider all of those as a comprehensive look.
Great. Thank you, Cliff. With that, a motion to adopt the agenda as modified would be in order.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, again, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just also want to let the Board know, for your consideration later in the agenda, that under the planning board appointment, that Richard Murphy called me this morning and asked that the Board not consider his application at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is recognitions. Cliff?
Yes, sir. I'll start with Andy Garman, recognizing David Ryan, the town engineer.
All right. Good morning. So, it is with great honor that I stand before you today to recognize David Ryan, for five years of service, as a full-time employee with the Town of Nags Head. The reason I make the distinction "full-time employee" is because David has actually been providing his unique brand of high-quality services to the town for a much longer period of time. Interestingly, David has been helping the town as far back as 2000. At that time, he worked for Bissell Professional Group, and they were our town engineer. He was working on projects behind some of the other staff. And in 2005, he took over the role as our primary point of contact with Bissell, as our town consulting engineer. At that point, he was reviewing site plans, he was designing projects for the town, he was doing a number of things to the town's benefit. In 2011, David actually, with his own personal company, became the town's consulting engineer in place of Bissell, and did that for about a year and a half. And then in 2013, Cliff made the wise decision to convince David to come to work full-time as an employee in the new position of project coordinator. 2016, David's position was reclassified as town engineer, at which time he was promoted into that role. Many people may not know that David served in the United States Army for several years, stationed in Monterey, California, in the 417th Infantry Battalion, 7th Infantry Division. During that period, David was deployed to Panama to serve in Operation Just Cause. Post-military activities included attending the State University of New York Institute of Technology, and David's from Albany, to receive his engineering degree. David comes from a large family, three brothers and four sisters, and currently resides in Manio with his wife Cheryl, who's here today in the audience, and son Liam. And I think Liam's the seventh grader at Manio Middle School, if I'm not mistaken. What many people will find most interesting about David is, he once played bass in an '80s metal hairband in upstate New York. His service to the town has been remarkable, accomplishing numerous tasks of all scales with extreme precision and tireless effort. Some notable projects include design and construction administration of Doughty Park Phase 1, design of Doughty Park Phase 2, which is currently underway, Bonnet Street Bath House site design, several phases of the multi-use path from Eighth Street to Jockeys Ridge, numerous drainage projects and coordination of the current stormwater master plan, as well as shoreline management efforts, including planning for the town's next beach nourishment project. David is an extremely hard worker, has an unflappable demeanor, and is highly regarded by his coworkers and colleagues in the field. So at this point in my remarks, David's probably wondering why I haven't expressed too many jokes at his expense. So, you know, he has a great dry sense of humor. David's also probably not aware that the town has a special gift for five years of service for people only in his position of town engineer. So, Roberta, would you show the Board and the public the gift that we want to give David? It's somewhat of an inside joke. But, he does love Gantt charts, and it's a very useful tool. He probably doesn't love them as much as we think he does, but anyway. David, we've put a lot on you in your position and your time with the town. The town really appreciates the work you do. We really appreciate you, and please stay with us for a long time.
Mr. Mayor, next we have Deputy Chief Shane Height will recognize Office Assistant Jackie Hart.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This morning, I too am extremely proud to recognize Jackie Hart for her hard work and dedication she does for the town and for the fire department. Jackie is a native of Manio, where she lives with her husband Todd and daughter Kirsten. She was a graduate of Manio High School and East Carolina University. Jackie is an extremely important part of the fire department, handling the day-to-day act administrative functions in the office at Fire Station 16. She was also in 2015 nominated as the Fire Department Employee of the Year. Jackie provides exceptional customer service to everyone who comes to the station, no matter what the need. She is extremely detail-oriented and ensures that any task that she is assigned is completed on time and accurate. She is responsible for annual updates to the town's emergency operation plan, manages all reporting and training records for fire staff, call reports, financial requisitions, and documentation, and any other task to ensure appropriate record-keeping and documentation is in place. Jackie regularly attends training, and she has completed classes recently at COA and the National Fire Academy. Jackie is a member of the North Carolina Fire and Rescue Administrative Professionals Group, and being a part of this group has enabled Jackie to network with other like-minded professionals to find solutions to common fire service administrative concerns. Jackie is always early for work, and most of the time, we have to tell her it's time to go in the afternoons. Jackie, thanks for all that you do, and congratulations on your 15 years of service.
Mr. Mayor, we also have a presentation this morning from Karen Brown, President and CEO of Outer Banks Chamber. Bob Peel is not Karen Brown, but he's gonna do the introduction.
I gotta say, I gotta digress here for a minute. I've known Dave for years, and to hear that he was in an '80s rock and roll band, I want to see the pictures. Because that was the era of the big hair bands, you remember? At least I do. So, I think that should have been a requirement or something. But anyway, you're very lucky to have that. They supposedly don't exist. I don't believe that either. Good morning, and thank you for letting us be on the agenda today. I'm Bob Peel, and I'm this year's Chairman of the Board of the Local Chamber of Commerce. And of course, Karen is here with me today. She's the President, and she's gonna bail me out if I get in trouble up here, so please bear with me. I'm not real good at this. But thank you for letting us be here today. We're here representing the Chamber of Commerce, which here locally has close to 1,000 members now. So it's a fairly sizable group, and I want to introduce to you today, just to let you know that the Chamber has embarked on a new initiative, and we're here to tell you a little bit about that today. The initiative is called the Community Housing Initiative. It's a group that was formed after the Chamber began or continued to hear of concerns, especially this past year and this past summer, concerns from businesses over the lack of housing for employees. And that is certainly not a new issue here on the Outer Banks, but it just seemed like this past summer, it got even worse than it has been in the past, and we just kept hearing more and more about it. So the Housing Group Initiative is a group that gets together and is talking through some of these issues, just trying to figure out if and how we can possibly try to address some of these issues that we're facing. The group is made up of representatives right now from, of course, the Chamber of Commerce, the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, the Home Builders Association, Restaurant Association, county and town officials. Cliff has been attending the meetings, and we're grateful for that. Business owners and managers, developers, realtors, and of course, just citizens from the community. Why are we doing this? Well, the Chamber's been sending out what we call our Business Retention and Expansion Survey for three years now, and that's where we sent out a survey to our members, saying, what do you need to, what's your biggest issues that you're facing? How can the Chamber possibly help you? You know, we're trying to get in touch with our members to learn more about what they're facing all the time. And for the last three years, the top two issues that have come back, is the biggest issues are always either housing or workforce, meaning we can't find workers. And the biggest reason they can't find workers is the lack of housing that's out there for the workers. So they're two issues that are very related. And last fall, we sent out, I think it was October of 2017, I think we sent out a survey to our members about housing in particular. Seventy-five percent of the businesses surveyed indicated that housing is the critical issue for finding and retaining their workforce. For example, the Outer Banks Hospital has lost some professional staff, and this is professional staff of people that concentrate in specific medical areas. They've lost some employees because the employees decided they couldn't afford housing costs here. COA has lost at least two instructors that we know of, who actually agreed to come here and be instructors and teach at COA, who got here and then decided, no, we can't do it. We can't pull it off financially because of housing. Even Dare County has told us, at some, at a couple of our meetings, that they're having problems now filling jobs. And again, housing is the big issue. So we're talking about year-round housing issues, seasonal housing. We're hearing about inability to fill professional jobs now, inability to fill year-round service industry and entry-level jobs, and of course, our seasonal positions. Now, people use these words interchangeably, affordable housing, workforce housing, public housing, you'll hear that every now and then. We're calling it community housing. We're trying to get away, this is housing for professionals and our summer workforce. This is not your inner-city public housing issues here. We are focusing in on housing that is available and reasonably priced, reasonably priced. So, we're gonna keep going on here. So who needs it? Everybody, as we've said. It's professionals, it's teachers, police, EMTs, firefighters, hotel staff, contractors who are having trouble. Gosh, we have contractors sitting around the table now, who, at these meetings, talking about how they just cannot, they cannot find workers. And these are companies that have been here for years, and they're saying it's the worst they've ever been. They can't find workers, and housing is the big issue, even if they could find the workers here locally, where are we gonna house them? And of course, the seasonal workers. But this is affecting doctors, lawyers, accountants, it's affecting everybody. And so that's why we think it's reached sort of a crisis level now, to be honest with you. It's affecting our ability to retain citizens and our workforce. We're talking to business owners, especially restaurant owners, who are having to work 70, 80 hours a week, some of them, because can't find workers, so they literally are having to live almost in the restaurants, because somebody has to provide the services in the restaurant, and it's ending up being the owners. When we talk about trying to pull businesses into the area, small businesses maybe, to create some jobs, first issue, one of the first issues you always talk about in economic development activities is housing or workforce. And it is the fact that we don't have the housing is affecting that effort. Customer service, because our worker fatigue is really starting, we're hearing about that. You know, owners saying our workers are so tired because they're having to work so many hours, because we can't pull it on different shifts, that it's affecting the services offered to our visitors in some ways. So it really is having quite a bit of impact that we're really starting to hear about. So, how is it made affordable? Well, that's what we're talking about. And so, you know, it really takes a lot of collaboration from all the partners. So I'm glad that we've got private sector sitting at the table, we've got government folks sitting at the table, we're really talking about a lot of different issues. You know, I look at zoning and density codes and multifamily housing, is that possible? Mixed-use development? It's all on the table for discussion right now. And that's what this group is discussing, but we do know we gotta be creative. There's no easy fix in Dare County. There's no easy fix. We don't have big parcels of land and all that stuff that a lot of folks do when they go to address this. So the benefits, just a few of these, there's several on the slide there, but promote multifamily housing and affordable housing, promotes workforce housing on a small scale throughout our neighborhoods for workers. Workforce housing, if it's done, it can be done hopefully at little or no expense to the public. Establishes, you know, because if it's spread out through our county, it's convenient for workers to get to and from work versus having one big, huge housing facility. If you spread out a little bit, then it helps workers get to work, which is helpful. It can provide additional income for property owners, and you'll see some more on there. So, why are we here? Why are we here today? What's the ask, as we call it? We're just here to start the conversation. We've been having these meetings and had conversation amongst ourselves and Chamber members, but now we want to get the towns and the county and the Board, everybody, the government involved, just to sit around the table with us and talk about this. And again, Cliff has been attending the meetings, and we hope you'll allow him to continue, along with maybe some of your planning staff at some point, just so we can keep the conversation going. We're here to ask if, can we continue to engage your staff in these conversations? And you too, quite honestly. We're here today to just let you know we're doing this. But we want to work collaboratively with all the stakeholders and try to, hey, this is not some quick fix. And gosh, there's been people talking about this issue for, I've been here two decades, and I heard it from day one. So, but we feel like we need to try, because we truly feel, the Chamber Board does, and a lot of our membership, that it has really hit a level, and a crisis level, that we've never really seen before, I think. So, with that said, that's the presentation. Again, we're just here to say hello and to thank you, and to ask you to please join in on the conversation with us. Karen has another handout she'd like to highlight very quickly.
I left here this morning a handout. This is from the North Carolina Housing Coalition. Just some data there from them. They certainly deal a lot in the Section 8 housing, but they do have some great statistics on here. I thought the interesting one, and you have one for Dare County and one for Currituck, because it is a regional issue, and the solution is probably gonna need to be regional as well. But 39% of renters and 30% of homeowners in Dare County have trouble affording their homes, whether they're renting or trying to purchase a home. So I think that's a really telling statistic that we need to think about, and hopefully try to find some solutions to. We're not the only resort area facing this crisis. It's happening all over the country. I'm in a group through our National Association that deals with the, we call it Destination Cities Council, and we're all talking about this issue as well. Some of those cities, Cape Cod and Vail, Colorado, have implemented some interesting programs to try to, you know, help their housing situation, so we'll be looking at them as we move forward as well, and hopefully engage with you all to try to find those solutions. We certainly don't think that, you know, one town is the answer. We need to find the land, but we need everybody at the table and everybody on board to try to find some creative and innovative solutions, so thank you.
And we'll take questions, and Karen will be glad to answer them.
Yes, thank you very much.
This is where I step away.
I'm gonna ask the Board members if they have any questions or observations.
Just an observation, one of the things that I've noticed is that some of the businesses that I know that are currently in that struggle have turned their workforce housing into Airbnb, and that doesn't help. I don't understand that, quite frankly, but...
Yeah. Airbnb is certainly impacting the whole crisis situation that we're in. I mean, even just on my street where I live, places that were year-round rentals have turned into Airbnb, so that puts some people out of homes, so definitely is an issue for us.
And quite honestly, too, you've got a bridge under construction down at Oregon Island. PCL brought a big workforce in that started snapping up housing pretty quick, but that isn't a normal workforce we typically have here.
And you have another bridge starting.
And another bridge starting. So, you've got several, a few more years left of just bridge work, and those crews have to...
Commissioner Walters?
No comments at this time.
Webb?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I had a new restaurant client in the office last evening, and we spent about half of our time talking about his project, and about half the time talking about how he was gonna house employees. So, appreciate the Chamber putting its oars in the water on this topic and trying to get a start, and I think that if the right opportunity arises, certainly with Cliff's participation, that we would look forward to being a partner and helping solve this issue.
I mean, for the Chamber, our goal was to set the table and bring everybody to the table. It's certainly not something that we can fix as a Chamber on our own. We need everybody there, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public comments. So Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the Board with public comments may do so. If you will, please approach the Board, and we want to remind everyone that the Board does not usually respond to public comments or answer any questions raised during the public comment session, but if you would, please address your comments to the Board as a whole, and we'll begin at this time.
Hi, I'm Lewis Toth, and I live in the Village. I am here to thank Police Change Brinkley and Animal Control and the Town for hiring this trapper, Mr. Sink, as in the Sentinel article there. He has trapped 14 coyotes since December 1st, and I really appreciate the leadership which you've shown on this thing, for me and for all my neighbors. We really appreciate what you've done. Thank you. Maybe you can get the golf course to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. Would anybody else care to address the Board with public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Al Freedman, and I am, as of September, a new resident of South Nags Head. My wife and I started coming here in 1976. Wow. Where we camped on the beach in Rodantie. And as we had kids, we gradually moved our way up to where we stayed in South Nags Head for 30 years. Every year, we are not world travelers, we are Outer Banks travelers. Every year since 1976, basically, we vacationed, and we knew more or less from the very first year that we moved here, or that we visited here, that we wanted to move here eventually. And we finally got the opportunity a couple of years ago. I'm here today in support, I am a member of the Housing Subcommittee on the Chamber that Bob and Karen so eloquently talked about. And I'm also a 30-plus-year real estate person. I've been in the business for 30-plus years. Moved here from Maryland and lived in Maryland all of my life until we moved here three years ago. And so I'm here to speak as a private citizen about what I've seen, and I'm a former engineer, so I also like charts and graphs like Dave. I wasn't in a hairband, but I did have hair back in the day. But, so I look at, I do a lot of personal evaluations and analyses of a lot of different things, and I also look at anecdotal information and personal observations. And what I've seen over the years, and this comes personally from the aspect of, in 2014, when we were first looking at the real possibility of being able to move here, I started looking at housing here. And in 2014, and we had to initially come here and rent for a couple of years while our house was being built in South Nags Head. So in 2014, as I started to look at some of the long-term rentals, there were plenty of long-term rentals at that point. By 2015, when we were in fact ready to make the move, it was incredible, the change that had occurred, virtually, it was very, very difficult to find quality long-term housing in just that one year. The difference that I saw was, it shocked me. And so, I've seen firsthand how the housing, the whole housing situation down here has changed. I've also, by virtue of living in Anarundel County in Maryland for basically 50 years, I've also seen how the development, the correct development of housing across the spectrum helps the whole community. You are able to bring in professional folks, increase the tax base, and you're able to bring in the workers that are needed in the local services and whatever. So I'm simply here to, again, to support and ask for any assistance that can be provided that we all can work together on and come up with some solutions to that issue.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Does anyone else wish to address the Board? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board Members. My name is Mead Gwen. I am the President of the Villages of Nags Head, and I've been a full-time resident there for about a year and a half now, although we bought back in 2003 originally. And my comments are gonna be very brief, and they're gonna be focused a little bit on the cart rollback issue that has been deferred. The other thing that I would like to say, as I know that you all will be considering this in the future, I sat in and was a member of that committee for, we had probably four or five meetings, and several things became obvious. First and foremost, it is a problem with the cans being overloaded, with the winds that we have down here, and cans, the garbage will be all over the place. But the big problem is that the cans are still being rolled out way too soon, and staying on the curb way too long, and the coyotes are a problem, and the other predation of the cans will have trash all over the place in a few days. And then, once it's picked up, then the cans aren't being rolled back, except by the fact that we and the village are... that we have down here, and cans, the garbage will be all over the place. But the big problem is that the cans are still being rolled out way too soon and staying on the curb way too long, and the coyotes are a problem, and the other predation of the cans will have trash all over the place in a few days. And then, once it's picked up, then the cans aren't being rolled back, except by the fact that we and the village are paying to have a rollback service within the Village of Nagshead property. But the big problem is that I don't want the town to lose sight of the fact, first and foremost, we depend upon tourism. That's our bread and butter here. And we want this place to be inviting. We want our areas to be trash-free. And the cans and the trash and stuff like that have been a problem. So I know that you're revisiting the ordinance as far as holding the renters responsible for their cans. And it's those, the renters are the ones that will be ultimately having to make arrangements with their management companies for the rollout and the rollback service. I'm asking the town, please don't lose sight of the timing. When they can go out to the curb and when they need to be rolled back, we'll take care of the rolling back all the way up to the house. We're paying for that. But we're asking for the town not to relax that ordinance by removing citations or removing fines, because if you do, we will lose all the leverage that we have with the owners complying with that ordinance. That's all I need to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. All right. Does anyone else who wishes to address the board? If not, at this time, we will close the public comment.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And thank you to all of our speakers. The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda are our public hearings, and I will turn it to Mr. Leidy again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendments that have been recommended by the Nagshead Local Business Committee to amend Article 13, which deals with buffering requirements as they relate to the number of required plantings in a buffer yard. This is a legislative hearing, and so the members who wish to present information regarding this do not have to be sworn, but there will be an opportunity for people to comment on the proposed text amendment. But we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis provided by Deputy Planning Director Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As was noted this morning, I'm here to present a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance that pertains to the landscaping and buffer requirements within the town code. Before we get into this, I realize that this ordinance, that's before you this morning, relies heavily on an ordinance that was adopted back in 2016, where we did some more whole-scale amendments of the landscaping ordinance. So just to give context to that very quickly, in 2016, the Local Business Committee, along with the Planning Board, the Board of Commissioners, and having had a joint workshop with Ms. Shannon Brooks with the Dare County Cooperative Extension, decided to make some revisions to the ordinance, which entailed, first off, creating a plant list of non-invasive plantings that would do well within the town, and then designating the areas in which those plantings would thrive. So as you'll see in the ordinance now, we have that plant list along with a breakdown of plantings that are preferable along the beach and the beach road versus plantings that are preferable between the highways and on the west side. Also with that, we looked at taking the buffering requirements that are required along roadways from a linear planting of having your trees and shrubs planted on five or 10-foot centers in a linear fashion adjacent to any roadway to allowing clustering. So not necessarily changing the number of plantings required, but instead of having them planted in a linear fashion to allow them to cluster the plantings as they saw fit. And this came for several different reasons, but one reason was, we were hearing from our local businesses that visibility was an issue. We kept getting requests for businesses to either remove their vegetation in totality or to trim it or propose a different design so that there was greater visibility from the roadway. We were also seeing people topping their vegetation, because as the ordinance is currently written, you have to maintain your vegetative buffer, but once it reaches the desired height, which in our code is five feet, it doesn't say that you can't maintain it to that five feet. So we were seeing a lot of people top their vegetation, which was not the desired look we wanted. So we felt like also by allowing people to cluster those plantings, especially the trees, it might lessen the need for topping, because people would still be able to achieve that visibility. And also, just from an aesthetic standpoint, the committee felt like this would be a good proposal. So we did. We proposed that ordinance. We took it through the process. That's what was approved in 2016. Since then, we've had a local business owner take that revised ordinance and actually try to apply it to his property. I believe there was actually a picture of this included in your package. It was this diagram. This will be helpful for this discussion. This business owner, he took the revised ordinance, he hired a landscape architect, and he tried to apply the new ordinance to his buffer yard, his buffer yard C, which is a five-foot-wide buffer adjacent to US 158 here. And once he got into that, he realized that the number of plantings and the width of the buffer made it very difficult to allow for any clustering. The idea was to promote clustering, but actually what we had done in the process was, with a five-foot-wide buffer, make it very difficult for that to occur. So this property owner, he is on the Local Business Committee, but he expressed his concerns, and it generated additional conversation on, is this revision in 2016 actually achieving what we had hoped that it would? And so it was at that time that planning staff working with the Local Business Committee came to a consensus that it might be best to look into reducing the number of plantings required within these buffers along the roadway. And that is what is in your packet this morning. I can run through the ordinance very quickly. So here's the revision that we're speaking of. So in the original 2016 ordinance, we had noted through our workshops that trees don't typically do well on the beach, along the beach road. So we didn't require any trees there. We had shrubs, at 30 shrubs per 100 linear feet of buffer, and ornamental grasses at 50, also per 100 linear feet. And then when you pop over to the highway and the soundside, we did have an allotment for five trees here, 20 shrubs, and 50 ornamental grasses and plants. What this recommendation, that's before you this morning, would do is to lower the number of shrubs per 100 linear feet to 20 shrubs, and ornamental grasses from 50 to 30 along the beach zone. And then in the soundside and highway, to reduce the number of trees required per 100 linear feet from five to three, the number of shrubs from 20 to 15, and the number of ornamental grasses from 50 to 30. And when you take this and apply it to our demonstration project here, you see how that actually fits quite nicely. It still doesn't allow for clustering, per se, but it allows the property owner to cluster their trees on either side and have their shrubs in between to provide for greater visibility of the business, as you can see in this scenario. So going back, going back to this, the only other revision that we made here was originally, we hadn't specified that all of these plantings needed to be non-invasive species, and at the recommendation of a planning board member, we have included that now. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? No questions?
None? Nobody?
All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Would any member of the public care to comment on this proposed zoning ordinance text amendment? If so, this is your opportunity.
Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Fuller is asking.
I'd like to speak as a member of the public, please.
You may. If you'll please approach the podium, address your comments to the whole board.
I'll be happy to. My name is Wes Fuller. Live at 316 Nag's Way. And I'd like to focus my comments just on the bypass portion of the proposed amendment. The first thing I'd like to draw your attention to is a early '90 study done by the town. The town hired Patton Zikino Landscape Firm, and Larry Zikino of that firm came and gave us an outline of what we, as the town, would like to see as how we want to approach landscape and buffering along the bypass. And before you, as a board, take any action on changing that ordinance, I would request that each of y'all read this study. It's on file, in town hall. I'm not sure how many people have seen it, but I think this set the value for what the town did in adopting its buffer ordinances along the bypass. And I do not know of any other study since then that would have changed that value for the town. Now, with that being said, that just shows you that we have it on file. There's also a long map that shows you how we want to address buffering along the bypass. I don't know if that map exists still, but Carolyn's still looking for it. The next thing I'd like Roberta to bring up is, it is in your package, and this is the vegetated planting guidelines. And particularly, I'd like to draw your attention to bullet 1, 2, and 10, but all of them, I think, do apply. But the first one is to buffer incompatible uses. The second is to soften, this is like the eye test I took last week, to soften the appearance, there you go, the appearance of commercial parking lot sites and large structures. One down at the bottom, buffer landscape trees and other plants also help reduce noise from auto traffic, glare from auto, and other lights, and help collect and reduce litter from reaching adjacent properties, et cetera. I propose to you that what this ordinance does, it goes, a proposed ordinance does, goes in exact opposition to what our values are that we express in our purpose and what we're trying to do with our landscape ordinance or buffer ordinance. I do not see in here any changes to 48, 482, 3C, which sets the standard. The changes I do see are in 48, 48, Section 48, 483, and we reduce the number of vegetation, and here again, I'm focusing on the bypass. And if you look, the request is to reduce the numbers of trees that we now have by 40%, reduce the number of shrubs we have by 25%, and reduces the number of grasses of Forbes by 40%. We talk about buffer, we talk about visibility. I took some pictures yesterday, forgive the quality, but when you're driving down the road, taking pictures, it's not necessarily going to be good. But if Roberta would bring some of those up, I'd just like to show you a couple, and I don't know how well we'll be able to see those. This is the French Door. This is a business that met the buffering ordinance before the 2016 change. Next. This is Secret Spot. There's the vegetation that is in front of that building. That is the only vegetation in front of that building. That building, I think, was built before any ordinances were allowed. Okay. The next, here again, that's Secret Spot. This is the bank, whatever the name of it is now, but that was done after the buffering ordinance was created. So that's all the buffer that's out there in front of that business right now. This is Forbes Candy. That is the buffer that exists that was built under the buffering ordinance prior to 2016. And here again, we keep talking about visibility and the buffer blocking the quality of the building. I'm having a hard time seeing where that buffer is blocking the building. I'm having a hard time seeing where the buffer is actually doing its job of reducing glare, visibility, et cetera, of what it's supposed to do. Next one. Here's the OBX Bank, which I know is town bank. This is one that was recently done that is under the old buffer ordinance before 2016. I'm not sure if you think that buffer reduces the visibility, but this is a buffer, I think, is doing its job of what we have traditionally wanted. Next. Here's the Jim. This one also meets the buffering ordinance when it, prior to 2016. Keep going. Keep going. That's a little bit of TWs. You can see the buffering ordinance and how it's applied there. They're same TWs, but from a different angle. This is the shopping center where Single Fin is. This is one that meets the buffering ordinance prior to the 2016 change. Keep going. This is Ace Hardware. I think this is built prior to any buffering ordinance, but it does have a nice buffer of wood out front. This is a building that was built after the buffering ordinance in, before 2016, so it shows you that shopping center and what the buffering looks like there. This is the Wings Shopping Center where Wave Rider is. This was built after the buffering ordinance was in place. This is the new 7-Eleven, and I'm not sure if this was built prior to the change in 2016 or after 2016. I think this is a building that has a buffer that was designed after the 2016 change. And then this is Kitty Hawk Kites. The building, the buffer was built after the buffer ordinance was in place. Here's the shopping center at Seven Feet Shoes. This one, again, I think, meets the ordinance after the buffering ordinance. And this is a very, very low-profile building, but I don't see where the buffering, as it exists prior to the 2016 change, impinges on the building itself. Here's another one of the urgent care area. This is with the buffering ordinance that was prior to the 2016 change. Go to the next one. Here's La Fagada, buffering ordinance. This was, the buffering here was placed probably 26 years ago, and it's been maintained. I don't think it impinges on the visibility of the building. Cotton Gin, same thing. Same thing, Cotton Gin, and keep going. Keep going. That might be the last one. I think that, I mean, that's enough. And I mean, all I did was just drive out of my driveway, turn right, went down a town line... driveway, turn right, went down the town line, turned back, came to Town Hall, and took those as I was going. The, the point of what I want to try to make is, is that I think I understand the change that was made in 2016 was to allow for some flexibility by business owners, and that obviously makes sense to me. I do think there needs to be some visual aspect to the building, but I think the proposal that's before you today in reducing trees by 40 percent, reducing shrubs by 25 percent, and reducing grasses and for, by 40 percent, doesn't do what we're trying to do. It may make it easier on a business owner to do something, but I think some of the people that have had problems with the buffer ordinance is because they haven't picked out the appropriate plantings. Or if they had picked out some plantings, they allowed them to reach certain maturity that is blocking their building. That's not to say that they can't continue to maintain their vegetation, they do. You can look at La Fagada. La Fagada's plants have been out there for 25 years, and you can still see the building. So, I just encourage you, as a citizen, to reconsider what's in front of you today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Would anyone else from the public care to comment? Mr. Cornwell, anything from the planning board? All right, anything further, Kelly? Does the Board wish to receive any further information about this before you begin your deliberations? All right. If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the Board may begin its deliberations on this proposed text amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, any comments, observations? Commissioner Cahoon?
Well, since I'm the liaison with the local business community, I will make some comments. It started out a few years ago, as, and Kelly did a great job explaining the history of it, talking about when plants mature and they get too old and they start having to die, they do die off, especially in our environment. And we also worked greatly with, we had a joint meeting with the planning board, the local business committee, and brought in soil and water conservation to talk about plantings that would thrive in our area. And we went through that, and that's how we came up with the list of things. And as Kelly also said, we did a demonstration project to see what would work, and we figured out a little bit, the committee did, of one size doesn't necessarily fit all, if you've got a five-foot buffer versus 10-foot buffer, sometimes it just doesn't work quite as well, so that's how the recommendations came forth. I do have amendments to some of our meetings, and we, granted, some of the photos that Mr. Fuller showed, probably need some work between the manager and the mayor and staff about perhaps enforcement, but, because some people have a tendency to put it in, they get their CO, and then they go away. But the committee's goal was to have businesses that had plantings that thrive, not that put them in and then did them away after they got their CO. It was to have vegetation that stayed. A lot of the people that are in shopping centers, some of the shopping centers do a really good job, it depends on whether their owner maintains their property or not. Obviously, some people do, and some people don't. Or you have a change of ownership, and they come in and start wailing about with the vegetation. One of the plantings, I think we looked at, some of it, the DOT put in for the town, we've had issues with people coming in and trying to cut that down. The post office is probably a prime example of lack of visibility, and that's a state project that the town got funded a long time ago, that probably needs some maintenance to it. But actually, what happened was, exactly as Kelly said, we looked at a, granted, we looked at a site-specific project as a demonstration project, and the number of plantings just theoretically didn't make sense based on what we had. Based on the, a five-foot buffer, you theoretically couldn't put really that many plantings in it. So that's how it came about. Just a little bit of history, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
We went through a lengthy process with this, and the people that were on the committee had, with the one, with the ordinance from 2016, had expertise in coastal landscaping, landscaping architecture, those kind of things. So we had a vast group of people that developed the ordinance. But sometimes, we learn things the hard way, and what we think is going to occur doesn't always occur. And if I look at even some of the landscaping that our own town put in, which, you know, as entryways into, whether it's 8th Street or coming across the bridge, all of that was put in with great intention, however, it didn't have a sprinkler system. A lot of it died, which then it began to look pretty pitiful in some areas. Trees need to be pruned, those kind of things. So the same thing that occurs with us as a town, and particularly across from Jockey's Ridge, where we planted Russian olives in between the two roads where they come together, they've grown as they grow about a foot a day in the summer, I think. But it's not necessarily a desirable look, and they're very invasive. The same thing has happened with a lot of our businesses and even our, our homes. I mean, I know that from my own property. So, I also know that some businesses, particularly where Sound Feet Shoes is, I can't remember if I was on the planning board or this board at that time, but there were issues with the landscaping and Japanese black pines, which is not, you know, while they look really nice and green, they become diseased very easily. I lost all of them at my home, which in hindsight is probably a blessing, but I think the same thing happened to them, and it was completely blocking the view of that shopping center. I think, I think it's a balance. I think if you look at a mature tree versus one that was recently planted, like 7-Eleven, it's vastly different. My home is 35 years old. There was nary a twig when we moved there, it was just grapevines and, you know, sand and some weeds largely. And now, it's landscape, but those things happen over time. So I think the purpose of the reduction is to look at a longer-term picture than, let's say, the instant gratification of what it looks like today. Immature shrub is vastly different from a mature shrub, and the same thing is true of trees. And then, we've just learned a lot about, you know, pampas grass and, and all of those things that sometimes look good and sometimes look horrible, depending upon the time of year. We've also found that even at 8th Street, where our sign is, "Welcome to Nag's Head", I mean, we've had to largely remove a lot of large vegetation there, because you couldn't see on the sidewalk, if you were pulling out of 8th Street, you couldn't see cyclists or walkers or any of those things. So times, sometimes vegetation needs to be removed just for public safety reasons. And that same thing happens in shopping centers and businesses. Where you plant today could look vastly different 20 or 30 years from now. So, I, I just say that in that, you know, the reduction, which was recommended unanimously by the planning board, there is a great deal of expertise there in regard to this, and some of those members participated on the 2016 ordinance. So, I just say that before we have motions and move forward.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, as a Commissioner this time.
Yes. And appreciate the opportunity to comment, but I personally see that the town has expressed values about the buffer and about landscaping. I cannot reconcile in my mind how this reduction meets those values. That's the first thing I have to say. The, the second thing I have to say, and this speaks more to Commissioner Walters' point of view, and that is, I think it's incumbent upon the owner or the developer of the property to make the proper selection of vegetation, so that they know what they're doing when they do it, and know how it'll affect their businesses five years out, 10 years out, et cetera. And two, that they maintain their vegetation. If they choose not to maintain it, then of course, it's going to get to a point where it blocks the visibility. But as a picture shows, is a thousand words, you can see La Fagada is sitting there with a buffer that's over 25 years old, and it doesn't block the building, they've never changed it, it's been there forever. Also, one of the pictures was of the shopping center where Sound Feet Shoes is, somebody may not like the fact that they planted a Japanese black pine out front, but you can still see the shopping center. So, I think it, it does exactly what we wanted to do in terms of a visual, sound, noise, glare. It does what we want to do. I don't want to block the visibility of the building, but if you ride around town and look at those buildings that met the ordinance prior to the 2016 change, I think you will think that most of them are probably the nicer-looking areas to go to and, and draw people. Then you have situations like Kelly's, that no longer exist, that did even more. You can't even see his building because of vegetation. It's never hurt his business that he kept all those oak trees on his lot in front of this building. As a matter of fact, I believe he would have cut them down if he didn't think this. It enhanced his business. So, I'm just saying that I understand what the committee was trying to do. I agree with what the committee is trying to do in terms of visibility of the buildings, but I don't think what is being proposed meets our standards of what we want, nor do I think it will be good for the businesses.
Thank you. All right. Any other comment?
I think the biggest problem is ownership of the property and the maintenance, and I think that's where the planning board has spent their time on that. And most of the properties that you mentioned, La Fagada with Russian olives, that's no longer acceptable plant use because it's invasive. He trims those four to five times a year. Most owners aren't going to do that. I think what you found with those other old properties is, once they died out for lack of irrigation, they didn't replace them. That's why they're visible. I think what the planning board was trying to achieve is less regulation, giving them the option, if they want to plant more, let them plant more. If they want to plant a certain amount, let them plant a certain amount. Let's create a buffer, and with the new plant list that they have on there, we can achieve everything that you're looking at, but it comes back to maintenance. If they're not watering their plants, they're not taking care and trimming their plants, they're going to run into the same problems that we're sitting here discussing today. But with the, the ordinance that they put in place, they're not trying to say, you've got to put 50 trees in, and it's going to look ugly, or you got to spend all this time and effort. Put in the trees that cover the lot, that achieve what we're trying to achieve, maintain them. We know most folks aren't going to sit there and water them, because that's an extra expense. Pay a landscaper to come out four times and do it. But in your case, if they want to come in, plant 50 again, or use, let's say, I think a boxwood's approved on that, all the way across the front, let them use a boxwood all the way across the front, let them do that maintenance. But it's, it's less regulation from the town, creating the same look, but giving that business owner that control over what happens, is the way I intended it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
Just as a follow-up, one of the driving forces was to get rid of Russian olives and non-invasive species, because they do tend to wander around and require a lot of maintenance, but was, as Mike said, to give flexibility. And I also remember Mr. Zuccino, he worked for the town when we did Town Hall, and we told him to kind of take a hike, because he could try to put in plants that wouldn't thrive in our environment. My memory was jogged with that, but it's not changing our value that's the goal, it's actually trying to enhance the value of putting in plants for the long term that will look nice, that will thrive in our environment, that are not going to be one-size-fits-all like Russian olives or black pines, because I know Croatan Center got rid of a lot of the black pines, because they eventually die off. So they, they did the right thing at Croatan Center. When they got rid of some, they replaced the vegetation, they just didn't leave a gap, which is, speaks well of the ownership of the property.
Thank you. With that, I think, at this point, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion that we adopt the changes as presented to the ordinance for landscaping this morning.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We've already had discussion, so if you, if you're willing, we'll proceed to the vote. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the planning board and the Planning and Development Director.
Good morning, Mayor and Board members. I'm just happy to provide you today an update on the Focus Nag's Head project. The committee met on January the 22nd to discuss comments that they had on Appendix A, Article 5 Nonconformities and Article 6 Zoning Districts. They agreed to meet again for an additional meeting on Tuesday, the 13th, to continue discussing their comments and work through that table of permitted uses that's also a part of this. That's all I have for you at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for Holly? Great. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Old Business and Items Tabled From Previous Meetings. The first is Consideration Of A Taxi Cab Driver Denial Appeal. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I recommend that the Board enter closed session in order to receive additional information and to have further discussion regarding that information, which should remain confidential pursuant to statute. And the motion I recommend that you make to enter closed session would be pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11A1, to prevent the disclosure of any confidential information.
Thank you. So, a motion would be in order?
So moved. Second?
Now, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session, to hear evidence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We'll be in closed session for a bit, folks. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We have returned to open session, and we need to take action, and so a motion would be in order.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the taxi cab application from Jessica Urbano.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the taxi cab application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Consideration Of A Newly Updated Resolution In Opposition To Offshore Oil Drilling. I believe it is the custom to read these aloud before we vote, and so I will do so. And I would like to thank Commissioner Walters for her, her input on this and the letter that we charged her as a board, the board member at our last meeting to, to do that. She was very instrumental in getting the, the facts together along, and then to craft that into a document along with our Public Information Officer, who I'm also grateful to. Town of Nag's Head Resolution Opposing Seismic Testing And Offshore Oil Exploration And Drilling Off North Carolina's Coast. Whereas the Town of Nag's Head is located on North Carolina's environmentally sensitive Outer Banks and, whereas the Outer Banks' lack of industrial development and proximity to critical habitat such as P. Island National Wildlife Refuge and Cape Hatteras National Seashore help make our, our area truly unique. Whereas North Carolina has a higher diversity of marine mammals than anywhere along the east coast of the United States or the Gulf of Mexico. And whereas our clean water, low-density development, and abundant open spaces attract visitors to our area, generating over 102 million in state and local tax revenues annually. And where- And whereas tourism, based on our unspoiled environment, is our area's primary economy, employing one in three Dare County citizens and providing 13,160 jobs. And whereas Dare County, with 1.1 billion in domestic travelers' expenditures, is number four in the state in visitor spending, providing 5% of North Carolina's travel income. And whereas coastal tourism in North Carolina of $3 billion already exceeds the mid-level projections for oil and gas almost 20 years from now, as reported in a 2014 paper by Timothy Considine, distinguished professor of energy economics at the University of Wyoming. And whereas these projections are contingent on the actual quantities of oil and gas offshore as well as actual prices of the resources. And whereas our commercial and recreational anglers rely on clean water for some of the world's best wild-caught seafood, renowned for its freshness and exceptional quality. And whereas, in addition to tourism and commercial and recreational fishing, many of Dare County's natural areas provide sanctuary and nesting breeding grounds for diverse groups of migratory birds, turtles, whales, fish, and other forms of wildlife. And whereas, according to the U.S. House of Representatives Subcommittee testimony given by Dr. Douglas Nowacek, distinguished professor of the Nicholas School of the Environment and the Pratt School of Engineering at Duke University in July 2015, airgun blasting used in seismic testing generates the most intense sounds that humans put in the ocean short of explosives. And whereas, moving forward with blasting in the Atlantic Ocean, according to Nowacek, will expose ocean animals to noise levels that are likely to cause impacts and to disrupt essential behavior patterns. And whereas, the inherent risk to our region from offshore oil and natural gas exploration and drilling have the potential to irrevocably harm our natural environment, our economic well-being, and our overall quality of life, proven by considering just two massive oil spills in waters contiguous to the United States. The Exxon Valdez in 1989, which leaked 10.8 million gallons of crude into Prince William Sound, resulted in $300 million in environmental damage, reduced tourism by 35% in southwest Alaska in the year after the spill, and caused 32,000 watermen, who made their living mostly on commercial fishing, great economic harm. And the Deepwater Horizon oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico in 2010, which leaked 205.8 million gallons of crude oil, contaminated 1,100 linear miles of coastline and caused a net negative impact on tourism across Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi, and Florida. In addition to the actual physical environmental damage triggered by the oil spill, the perception of damage and negative impacts on leisure activities and the seafood industries resulted in greater harm to tourism. Whereas, as reported in a March 24, 2014 NOAA article, crude oil causes developmental abnormalities in marine fish. And whereas, the NRDC's June 2015 summary of the impacts of the Deep Horizon oil spill disaster states that nearly 1 million coastal and offshore seabirds were killed and more than 1,000 sea turtles were found dead after the disaster. And whereas, the Town of Nags Head's Board of Commissioners have remained steadfast in their opposition to seismic testing and offshore drilling, previously adopting seven resolutions since 1989 and providing numerous comments to various government agencies since 2006. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Nags Head continues to be opposed to seismic testing and offshore oil exploration and drilling off the coast of North Carolina, and requests that its strong opposition to future leasing off the coast of North Carolina through all stages of development of the 2019-2024 draft-proposed national oil and gas leasing program be considered. Be it further resolved, that we also request that no further action related to seismic testing and oil exploration or drilling take place in the Atlantic Ocean off North Carolina's coast, adopted the 7th day of February 2018 by the Nags Head Board of Commissioners. Sorry, that's very long, but we were trying to say a lot. It's an important issue, and so a motion would be in order, and then any discussion?
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
May I be the time to add a couple things, not to the resolution, but to ask our citizens to do some things?
It would be appropriate. Thank you.
This past Saturday, Commissioner Walters and I went to Raleigh at the request of the governor and his staff to have a meeting with Secretary Zinke about this issue. The governor had invited, I got invited because of the Coastal Resources Commission, Commissioner Mayor Pro Tim Walters Tourism, she's immediate past chair of the Tourism Board. There was new Hanover County Commissioner, Dr. Stan Riggs was there, the mayor of Atlantic Beach, the chairman of the Carteret County Chamber of Commerce, a charter boat captain and retired Army Corps of Engineers, the secretary of DEQ, the governor, of course, the attorney general. I think I've pretty well captured it. And it was a fairly cordial conversation with Secretary Zinke. The governor reiterated that he was prepared to sue, so did the attorney general. One of the things that came out was that the cost of the Deepwater Horizon cleanup was $60 billion. That's more than twice North Carolina's annual budget. It also was pointed out by Secretary Zinke that when the state of Florida came up in the exemption was that their elected officials, local, state, federal, the governor, were all in lock sync against it. And it was pointed out that that's not true in North Carolina, that the eastern part of the state legislators are opposed to it. Secretary Zinke further went on over to the House and met with the leadership of the House and the Senate, and if I recall correctly, some of the comments were from Smithfield West, were all in favor of this. I've not seen any indication that there would be any revenue coming to the state of North Carolina, that there would be any money put into a fund to mitigate any damages coming forward if something were to happen. And I think probably the most compelling person in the meeting to me was Dr. Riggs, who pointed out that that far out in the ocean off of our volatile coast, given the Labrador Current and the Gulf Stream, that's 12,000 feet of water, and to get to the, go through the crustaceous level down to the Jurassic level, you're going to have to go 37, over 37,000 feet of drilling in that harsh environment. And what's appalling to me is that our elected senators, and I'm not talking about Congressman Jones because he is opposed to it for our coast, but that nobody seems to care about our coastline, but they all want the money that comes from our coastal communities. Dare County, it's a $3 billion economy, and Dare County has 1 billion of the coastal community. So we account for like a third of our coastal revenues. But we, as citizens, and anybody listening, needs to talk to our senators. You don't have to talk to the governor, he's in lockstep. The attorney general's in lockstep, but our Senate leadership, our House leadership, Berger and Moore, both need to hear from our constituents. Senator Cook needs to hear from our constituents as well. But everybody needs to get out there and be proactive. People need to be making comments to Bowman, to Secretary Zinke. I mean, although he acknowledged that most stuff is moving onshore because of the cost and the availability, what we don't need to do is be lackadaisical and think that that's the way it's going to be. We need to be proactive and take stands on this, and our citizens really need to think about it, and they need to be involved. And forgive me if I misstipped anything, but...
I think you covered the issue very well, and I'm not sure how we, aside from our comments and contacting our legislators in the state and also in our U.S. legislators, we need to make the case. In Florida, they are all united, but all of Florida is pretty much coastal. We just have a portion of North Carolina, the coastal community. We need to work together on this. We need to help our Western neighbors understand our economy and the importance for the long-term future of North Carolina. I think seismic testing and drilling is very short-sighted. It's for some form of immediate gratification. We are exporting oil and gas. Additionally, I think some believe that we are importing from the Middle East. Our largest number of imports come from Canada. So it's vastly different than what is sometimes presented as far as the necessity for drilling for oil and gas. We are a very fragile environment along this coast, very fragile. And should something happen, I'm not sure, pretty sure we wouldn't recover in my lifetime. So we need to protect our coast for future generations and our economy for future generations.
Mayor, one further comment?
I would ask that this resolution, and furthermore, that you, as mayor, contact the League of Municipalities about taking a stand on this.
Great. Thank you. I'll be happy to do that. I think that that is appropriate. We will add them as an addressee to this and follow up, and I think a letter as well. I would thank you and Mayor Pro Tim Walters for your trip. I know it was short notice to Raleigh and a long day. We all in Nags Head appreciate you both being there and being in a position of leadership to be invited to that meeting. And finally, there are arrangements being made locally for buses to go to the hearing in Raleigh on the 26th. I'm planning to be there. I think a lot of folks are planning to be there. Mayor Pro Tim Walters is planning to be there. And the bigger presence that we can bring to Raleigh, the more impact that we will have. We want those legislators on the six o'clock news to see that there was an overwhelming Outer Banks presence at that meeting. With that, I don't think we voted on this yet, so if we may, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. And your report, Commissioner Cahoon, was a good segue because we were at new business and committee reports. Are there committee reports? Anybody? Yep. Seeing none. The next item on our agenda is consideration of board and committee appointments, the planning board, the board of adjustment, the stormwater committee, the dangerous animal appeal board, the Albemarle Rural Planning Organization Transportation Advisory Committee. You've had time to review the openings and the various applicants, they were part of the advertised packet, so I'm not going to recite any of those. So firstly, the election of Commissioner Sears created a vacancy on the planning board. So at this time, I would open the floor to nominations for planning board.
I'd like to nominate Megan Vaughn.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to elect Megan Vaughn. Are there other nominations? Hearing none. I'll move that nominations be closed. Since we have one candidate, that's essentially election by acclamation, all those in favor of electing Megan Vaughn to the planning board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion passes. The election of Commissioner Fuller created a vacancy on the board of adjustment. So at this time, I would open the floor to nominations to fulfill the vacancy on the board of adjustment.
Nominate Bobby Gentry.
Okay. Thank you. I have a nomination for Bobby Gentry for the board of adjustment. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for Bobby Gentry. Are there any other nominees? Hearing none. Then I would close the nominations. We have one nominee. All those in favor of electing Bobby Gentry to the board of adjustment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. There's an unusual circumstance created there because we have elected an alternate from the board of adjustment to the board of adjustment, which creates a vacancy in the alternates, and we are required to have four of those. It is my understanding that we can wait until our next meeting in order to fill that vacancy. The board also has the responsibility to appoint the chair and vice chair of the board of adjustment. Those positions are currently held by Chair Jack Cooper and Vice Chair Margaret Suppler. So I'd ask, what's the board's pleasure on this? Do you want to reappoint those serving or nominate and elect new persons to those positions?
Mayor, I would make a motion that we keep Jack Cooper as chair and Margaret Suppler as vice chair.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I've got two seconds. Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second to retain Chair Jack Cooper and Vice Chair Margaret Suppler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much. That motion passes. We need to appoint a board member to the stormwater committee, and a nomination would be in order. Mike?
I'll make my second.
No. No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you would.
I would nominate Commissioner Sears to that position.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And Mike, I assume you are willing to serve?
I'm willing.
Okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor of electing Mike Sears as the board member to the stormwater committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We need to appoint a member to the dangerous animal appeal board. I have offered myself up if y'all are willing, so a nomination would be in order.
I move we appoint the mayor Ben Cahoon.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to appoint the mayor to the dangerous animal appeal board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thank you. And finally, we need to appoint a member to the Albemarle Rural Planning Organization Transportation Advisory Committee. This position was previously filled by Commissioner Ratzenberger.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Webb Fuller, if he's willing to serve.
I prefer not to have had my fill of that organization.
Thank you very much. I know...
Would you like to do?
I think I am willing. Yes, I am willing.
Okay. I would like to nominate Mayor Ben Cahoon to serve. Second.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to elect the mayor to the ARPO Transportation Advisory Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I would like to point out, though, that this particular committee is not the same as what it used to be.
Mm-hmm.
This one does strictly deal with transportation issues and trying to work our way up through DOT projects.
And I'd be happy to serve as an alternate if the mayor could not...
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you. I believe that fills all of our appointments for today. So our next item on the agenda is consideration of amendments to Town Code Chapter 20 Fire Prevention and Protection and consideration of commercial fire inspection schedule policy. Mr. Height, thank you.
Good morning again, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd just like to speak to you today and ask that you consider looking at this adoption. We are preparing actually for an inspection through the Department of Insurance in March, and through the process of preparing, it has, we have seen that there's a few things that we need to fix some paperwork issues, if you will. Currently, the Town Code of Ordinances adopted the Fire Code back in 1995, I do believe. The state recommends that every five years that we re-adopt the current edition of the code, and furthermore, they go ahead to say, and it's actually in the Fire Code, that the board has to approve the fire inspection schedule that we currently utilize. We don't stray away from what's in the code, and I think you have in front of you one of the attachments that actually has the excerpt right out of chapter 106 of the Fire Code. But basically, this is just a, you know, again, updating the language to the current edition of the Fire Prevention Code. Originally, when it was adopted, I believe it was still, you know, Building Code, Volume 5. Now, the Fire Code is standalone, so to speak. Still falls under the Building Code, but there's a standalone Fire Prevention Code that's adopted. adopted. If there's any more questions that I can answer or more information that I can give, I'll be more than happy to. What is, yes, sir?
I assume it's still standard practice that during peak season, the hundred days or so, that we're not interrupting business opportunities?
Our, our goal, Commissioner, and it's actually of a policy that's written, that our inspection season begins actually January and ends by Memorial Day. The only time that we do any inspections or are supposed to do any inspections in the summertime is if there's a violation that has come about that hasn't been resolved or if we get a report of an issue that needs to be corrected.
I will say, just, just an observation, our office gets inspected on, on the schedule, and it keeps us on our toes. It does make us, in fact, check our emergency fixture operation. The guys are always just fantastic. They're always polite. They're always thorough, very businesslike, and, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate what you guys do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
So are there any questions or comments? And if there are not, a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I think we're looking for two.
I'm sorry. We need two separate motions then. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the text change to Town Code Section 2081.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to modify the, the code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you. And then the next motion would be in order on the schedule.
Make a motion that we accept the commercial fire inspections policy schedule.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt the commercial fire inspection schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a request for a water impact fee study and associated budget adjustment.
Hi. Good morning, mayor and commissioners, and thank you, Attorney Lighty, for returning in such great time and helping me sort of understand this new state statute. It is North Carolina General Statute 162A215. And I come to you with a request to approve Budget Amendment 8A. And this basically would preserve the economic sustainability of the future of our water capital infrastructure. This North Carolina General Statute is called the Public Water and Sewer System Development, Development Fee Act. And what we, what the statute calls a system development fee, we call a water credit unit, a WCU. A lot of people call it an impact fee. But any way you slice it, we would fall under the statute. And basically, in order to legitimize or charge impact fees or water credit units after July 1st, 2018, we need to engage with a professional. And what we're asking is the engineers currently doing our water master plan to go ahead and they are able and qualified to do the study for us. They're going to provide a written analysis that would forecast our water needs over the next 10 to 20 years. And they will calculate what we can actually charge as a water credit unit. This will need to be done and posted at our fee schedule, contingency fee schedule effective July 1st, 2018. The study needs to be completed so we can post the results on our website no later than 45 days before the adoption of our budget. So that would be mid-May. So we would, I would request for you to adopt this budget amendment so basically we can legally charge water credit units.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Amy while she's at the podium? Mr. Lighty, do you, do you have any comments on this?
No, she's adequately or correctly described the, the need for this and the process, and I agree with the need to go forward with this.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we go to a motion? All right. Hearing none, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Fuller, is there a second?
I'll second that up to the $25,000.
And I'm sorry, I, we actually just repeat, received the quote yesterday. It was $12,000.
Okay.
So we, we weren't sure how much it would cost. So it was, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. So the budget amendment will be for $12,000. That was the quote.
Right. Yes, this, this agenda item was pulled together before the quote was acquired.
We just received it yesterday.
And we got really good news yesterday that we can get this for a fraction of the price.
It's a bargain.
So there is a motion and a second on the table. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for great price shopping. That's excellent. The next item on our agenda would be items referred to and presentations from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing at this time.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda would be items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask the police chief to come up and give update on the community watch meeting.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, mayor, commissioners. Just want to remind everybody of our upcoming community watch meeting. It will be held Tuesday, the 13th, at 6:00 p.m., and it's at the south wing of the fire station. They had a great meeting last month, and we're looking at trying to revamp and do some updates with community watch. So if you want to see what community watch is going to be like in the future, please try to join us. We'll tell you what it's about and what it's like to be a member. So next Tuesday, 6 o'clock, Fire Station 16.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is items from the Board of Commissioners, and the first one is from Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you, mayor. Brought this forward, the Marine Fisheries has proposed to change commercial fishing licenses, that if you don't require a certain amount of your income from commercial fishing, you will no longer be eligible for a commercial fishing license. If anybody has any doubt about it, most people work two jobs, and just because you don't derive 50% of your income, and I'll give you an example. If you're a pound netter, you work maybe three months a year. The other nine months, you're going to have to work doing something else. And this is just simply, in my view, a way to further decimate our commercial seafood industry in North Carolina. They went after shrimp last year. I guess they're going after fishing licenses this year for commercial. And I would ask that the board take, consider this resolution. If you'd like, I'll read it.
Yes, I would ask you, if you would, read it. And am I correct that the Dare County Board of Commissioners adopted a similar resolution on Monday?
Yes, they have. They've adopted it. They adopted, actually, I think they adopted one at a previous meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
But this is a resolution opposing any change in the definition of a commercial fishing operation, whereas commercial fishing is a vital part of North Carolina's history, heritage, and culture, and represents a crucial component of the economy for the Town of Nagshead, Dare County, and other coastal communities. And whereas, according to the North Carolina Division Marine Fisheries, the sales impact of the harvesting and sale of commercial seafood is $388,325,000, and the income impact of employed commercial fishermen is $166,660,000. And whereas, the definition of what constitutes commercial fishing in North Carolina has been determined by the General Assembly and has long been established in Section 113-168 of North Carolina's general statutes. Whereas, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries has now undertaken an action to consider changes in the definition of a commercial fisherman. And whereas, among the items that the Marine Fisheries Commission proposes to consider as a requirement, that those holding commercial fishing licenses must have 50% of their earned income from the trip ticket program, generate 36 trip tickets per year, and require those who do not have trip tickets to show proof of $10,000 or more income per year. And whereas, no other professional license issued by the state dictates a percentage of income or minimum income requirement of, or level of participation in order to qualify. And whereas, the requirements that are considered by Marine Fisheries or any other adverse change they may propose to the definition of commercial fishing would have a harmful effect on many of the hardworking North Carolinians who now engage in commercial fishing and already suffer because of government overregulation that imposes severe quotas and unnecessary restrictions on fishing seasons, limits, and gear forcing many to take on additional jobs and engage in part-time businesses in order to responsibly support their families. And whereas, this latest attempt to redefine commercial fishing is not the first time that the Marine Fisheries Commission has looked at this matter. And whereas, over seven years ago, in October 2010, the Marine Fisheries Commission enpanned a Fishing License Review Task Force, which examined in detail the requirements for holding a commercial fishing license and concluded that the definition contained in the general statutes was adequate, and therefore, there was no real need to modify the definition of what constitutes a commercial fisherman. And whereas, furthermore, the final report from the Fishing License Review Task Force clearly stated its recommendations that no changes are needed to the existing definition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nagshead Board of Commissioners supports the definition of commercial fishing that has been determined by the duly-elected members of the North Carolina General Assembly and reflected in the North Carolina General statutes. And be it further resolved that the Nagshead Board of Commissioners strongly opposes the unnecessary effort that is now underway by the Marine Fisheries Commission to reexamine the definition of commercial fishing, and urges all coastal communities to adopt similar resolutions, and encourages all residents to vigorously voice their concerns about the latest attempt by the Marine Fisheries Commission to once again redefine commercial fishing, hopefully adopted this 7th day of February 2018.
Thank, thank you very much, and thank you for bringing this forward. Are there any questions or comments from the board before we proceed? All right. Thank, thank you very much. Any other comments, Commissioner?
Motion on the floor.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, I mean, adopt the resolution as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Are there other commissioners who have any items they'd like to bring to the board at this time? Commissioner Sears?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Cahoon, anything else? Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Fuller?
No.
Great. Thank you very much. I have a couple of items. One is that you have in your packet, and I will, I will read these for the benefit of the public and the press, although they, they were published on the web and in our packet. We have a number of workshops coming up. We have the CIP workshop on Friday, March 16th, presentation of the manager's budget on Wednesday, May the 2nd. We will have a Board of Commissioners workshop, workshops on May the 9th and May the 17th. We will have a public hearing on the budget on June the 6th. We will have another workshop on June the 11th, and then we plan to adopt the budget on June the 20th. Do we need a motion to formally adopt those dates? No. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
None of these have times.
That's correct. They don't. So what was staffs thinking about these meeting times? We've all cleared our calendars, I think, for these dates.
Yeah, because I have some conflicts at certain times, but not...
Not all day. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Generally, 9:00 a.m.
Okay. If I may, I have a couple of other items before, before I finish here. One is that I, I would like to report to you that I attended my essentials of municipal government class a couple of weeks ago, completed the ethics training that was required, and turned my certificate in to the clerk. I would like to say, based on my observation of that, a large room full of over 200 people, that our problems are relatively small in the scheme of things. You know, frankly, when you, when you hear the kind of questions that some board members ask, you realize that we've, we're in pretty good shape. The, the other thing that I would observe is that almost every time there was a best practice presented by one of the speakers or when someone from the room offered what their community did, I would say 90% of the time or better, we were already doing that or better in the Town of Nagshead, which, which made me feel, feel pretty good about what we do. And then I will highlight, I'll take a personal privilege and highlight one item. I am an advisor to a project called Rising. And Rising is a multimedia, it's a, it's funded by North Carolina Sea Grant in part. It is a research project that resulted in a photo essay about community response to sea level rise throughout eastern North Carolina. There are some beautiful photographs that are part of this. There are some stories that were gathered from, from folks throughout the region that were impacted. There will be an opening exhibition and a presentation at Love House and Hutchins Forum in Chapel Hill, the Center for Study of the American South. That's February the 16th at 5:30 is that opening. And if you can go, I, I hope, we don't have other exhibit dates and locations yet. Trust that it's going to get much closer to Nagshead at some point.
Repeat that date again, mayor. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. It is February the 16th at 5:30 p.m. in Chapel Hill at the Love House. And that's all I have. If I've not missed anything, I believe a motion to adjourn might be in order at this point.
So moved.
Oh.
Adjourned just to the flood map workshop.
Do you want to do that?
Yes.
February 18th?
21st.
21st.
Okay.
Instead of a mid-month.
Do you want to do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I had missed this. So, yes, if you'll elucidate a little bit, Cliff, please.
We've talked about holding, in lieu of a mid-month, February meeting, holding a flood map workshop with the board, just to try and reengage the board in the position and for staff to be able to share with you where we think we're headed with the flood maps. I think the, as a county, there's discussions that, in hopes that all municipalities in the county can get on the same page, and we don't want to carry your message forward until we've had a chance to discuss it fully with the board. And so we've, we've, we're asking to consider doing that at your mid-month instead, instead of a meeting.
Okay. So that would be at our mid-month meeting date, which I believe is at 5:30. What is the board's, what is the board's pleasure on this? Are you inclined, it is an issue that we need to address so that we can give staff some direction?
At a workshop?
Yes.
If something comes up between now and then, are we allowed to take that up as an action item?
I'm seeing a no.
No.
Not an advertised workshop.
Conducted as part of a meeting?
I would suggest that we have a meeting with the only thing on the agenda being the workshop, which allows us to do anything we might need to do.
Are you suggesting recessing this meeting to a different day to do exactly that? That's what I would recommend, because that would be a continuation of this meeting in which any other business could be conducted.
Okay. That makes sense to me. Yes. Okay. All right. Then that motion would be in order to recess this meeting to February the 18th, 21st, excuse me, February the 21st at 5:30 p.m.
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opposed? All right. Great. We are recessed until the 21st at 5:30. Thank you very much.